I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mayor Rod Dos Maguwal is away at this time and could not be here, so I'll be acting in his stead as vice mayor. And Councilmember Perranio won't be here this evening. With that being said, we do at least have three of us. Councilmember Manalo and Councilmember De Giovanni, thank you so much for being here. And we do have a quorum, so we will get down to business. With that being said, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we can all kindly please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You seen it? Oh, I forgot the land acknowledgement. Is that? Okay. Before we go on, I'd like to provide a land acknowledgement. The city of Daly City acknowledges that we are on ancestral lands of the Ramatouche Olone peoples. We recognize their enduring connection to this region and honor their history, culture, and contributions. As the indigenous protectors of this land, we affirm their sovereign rights as the original inhabitants of this land and pay respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouche Olone peoples. Madam City Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Perranio?
Excused.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Excused.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present. Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge, and our next item on the agenda is presentations. We have a proclamation for the Parks and Recreation Month. And we would like to honor our recreation commission. With that being said, I'd like to call up the Chair of our Recreation Commission, Mr. Nate Ortiz.
Fernando.
Fernando.
Oh. I was getting there. I'm sorry. It's turned around. Okay. The Chair, Fernando Montez, would you please come on up? And Mr. Nate Ortiz, one of the commissioners on the Recreation Commission.
Thank you for being here this evening. And with that being said, I'm going to ask Councilmember De Giovanni to read the proclamation.
Thank you all for being here this evening. It's quite an honor. So the Proclamation for the Parks and Recreation Month of July 2025. Whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Also, whereas the city of Daly City recognizes our parks and recreation as an integral part of all communities throughout the country. And Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who have and live near parks. And our Parks and Recreation promotes and gives our time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing the cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating any illnesses and helps also things such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's, and many more. The Department of Recreation Services is a healing provider of addiction, healthy meals, nutrition services, and encourages physical activities by providing many of the spaces and popular sports, fitness courts, swimming pool, older adults and services, and many other events distinguished in our community to promote active lifestyles. The Department of Recreation Services programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time services, youth sports, life skills, which includes readiness for jobs, cooking classes, and leadership experience are critical to childhood development. Our Parks and Recreation also increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and the attention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas the city of Daly City, Department of Recreation Services, fosters social and cultural experiences that cultivate a positive environment inclusive of everyone and all of our population, promoting understanding, equity, and strong sense of community. Now therefore, Dr. our mayor, Dr. Roderick Dos Maguwal, mayor of our Daly City and members of our City Council of the city of Daly City, do hereby proclaim July 2025 Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Daly City. And all upon all, residents in the community to pay tribute to our beloved Parks and Recreation professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make in our community, health, safety, and our quality life. Signed therefore, our Vice Mayor, our Councilmember Manalo, Councilmember Perranio, and myself, Councilmember De Giovanni, and to the Recreation Commission, which works jointly with our department seamlessly. I thank you all and celebrate you. And give this back to the...
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. Before I have you folks say a few words, I'd like to also acknowledge Mr. Denise Brown, who's in the back, who's the director of... I'll start off with the first comment and pass it on to my colleagues. Thank you again, Ms. De Giovanni, for reading this. And as I listened to you on the whereas statement, I had no idea of everything that's going on in recreation. But one thing did stick out in my mind, and that was the cooking class, which I was there, and definitely appreciated. To the commissioners of the Recreation Commissioner, I've watched your meetings from time to time, and I see the cohesiveness amongst you all. And what I especially like is the collaboration with the recreation staff and seeing what else can we do for the community of Daly City. I am so impressed with that, and it makes me proud to be a member or a resident of Daly City. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you so much. Now I'll open it up to Councilmember Manalo or De Giovanni, if you'd like to say anything.
Thank you very much.
I'll have you go next after Justin, because you read the proclamation, Pam, and you're probably trying to gather your thoughts.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Huge congratulations to the Recreation Commission for the work that you do. It's volunteer what you do and in and out really shaping what's so important in our community. Recreation, you know, Daly City was the first city in the nation to deem isolation as a public health crisis. And really, we've seen how crucial it was during the pandemic. But the Recreation Department Commission really tried to find ways to build community even at that time and even more so now. And so from the youth to the older adults and seniors, you know, Director Denise Brown and your entire staff, all of you really are the heartbeat of our community and serving those, really, you know, community is felt... I was just talking to someone who had a family member, and unfortunately, their health has declined because of the lack of interaction with... Usually she sings at a choir, but she's unable to do so, and she saw the decline in her health. And what you all bring is really that connectivity. When I see the volunteers program and, you know, the young people really building those connections that will be long-life friendships, you know, over decades. Like growing up here in Daly City, you see that and you reflect back on those moments. I remember one program that you all had was like the Leadership, the Leadership Challenge. And I mean, now I'm dating myself at that point because Councilmember Mayor Kara Klett signed it for me. But that was a partnership with you all. And to me, having other peers from other high schools come together and look at ways to unite was really amazing. To our senior programming where we know, oh my gosh, the amazing food that Opal... I mean, she could really honestly probably put herself and have her own restaurant, but because of her service heart, she gives back to the community and everyone in all of the respective areas, whether it is Dolger or Lincoln Park at the Bay Shore to Gellert Park. I mean, we have an ecosystem here in Daly City, but without each and every one of you, I mean, let's give you all a round of applause to all of the workers here. Really, like you put the smile on, whether, you know, whatever event it is. So I want to say thank you to that and continue the amazing work. I know there's a lot of residents that look forward to the programs that you all put on, whether it's in the booklet or online. They really utilize what you all present and to the commissioners for your leadership. Thank you so much. We know that we value the work of the Recreation Department. It's something that is really a part of the fabric of Daly City. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, Councilmember De Giovanni.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, first of all, I had the privilege of coming to a Recreation Commission meeting, and it was such so lovely to see the Director Eduardo and the Supervisors Romeo and Jennifer sitting there. And it was such a collaboration. And just to sit there and listen to the ideas that they listen to and very open-minded and how they're going to move forward and being accepting, seeing how we can work together. And given that, for me, I was so inspired thinking, how can we as a council, how can we support this? You know, come back with the ideas that, you know, through our director and with the ideas, because it, as we heard tonight, just in the, not just in the proclamation, but as we know, the recreation affects all of us, right? And it's so important that mentally, physically, and everything, even with all you working together collaboratively in each department, everything we offer, the basketball, I see the Daly City Dolphins here. We offer so much that, and some things, I think they don't get communicated out as much as we need to, but the commission is willing to do that as well and come up with great ideas. And I love that the director was communicating and so we can grow together. And listen to also our people in our community that can come and speak to you and let you know they... I speak to a lot, even the seniors that have ideas that would like to reintroduce or have ideas that you are open-minded. And I appreciate the Chair and the members and the commissioners and your input and looking forward to growing. And each of you that want to come here and some live here and then they want to be part-timers, then they end up being full-timers, then they're here. It's beautiful. It's really beautiful. And if we could provide the opportunities through our city manager and our director and supervisors, I think that that's what we're here for, the Daly City teens, the youth. We, the big promotion through the youth, where Ryan and Brian and they have the cooking thing going on and after-school programs that they all participate in that people don't really know. And Dolger, I mean, one day, as we all know, even with our city manager, we will have a Dolger, a new Dolger, one day, right? So, and then expansion, all the facilities. So thank you very much to all of you. You all play an integral part. Everybody's welcoming to all the people. I have such great input from the seniors and the youth and every spectrum you can think of. You touch lives that you don't know you touch. I don't think you really know how much you touch them because just coming in contact with an employee enough, even when I go to Bay Shore, Gellert, or Lincoln or wherever, it touches the lives of people and it's integral. So thank you very much and thank you to all of you. And you're what makes everything works with full of positivity. So looking forward to the ideas we're here to support. So thank you very much. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Giovanni. What I'd like to do is present this proclamation to you both, and then we'll open it up for comments, if any, that you folks may have as well. All right? So if I can have my colleagues step up to the front, and we'll present the proclamation. And if you would like to take any photos and staff, Denise, I see you're ready because you always have that iPad, so... We're going up to the front. Where's a good area where I can see myself? And so we can grow together. And listen to also our people in our community that can come and speak to you and let you know they... I speak to a lot, even the seniors that have ideas that would like to reintroduce or have ideas that you are open-minded. And I appreciate the Chair and the members and the commissioners and your input and looking forward to growing. And each of you that want to come here and some live here and then they want to be part-timers, then they end up being full-timers, then they're here. It's beautiful. It's really beautiful. And if we could provide the opportunities through our city manager and our director and supervisors, I think that that's what we're here for, the Daly City teens, the youth. We, the big promotion through the youth, where Ryan and Brian and they have the cooking thing going on and after-school programs that they all participate in that people don't really know. And Dolger, I mean, one day, as we all know, even with our city manager, we will have a Dolger, a new Dolger, one day, right? So, and then expansion, all the facilities. So thank you very much to all of you. You all play an integral part. Everybody's welcoming to all the people. I have such great input from the seniors and the youth and every spectrum you can think of. You touch lives that you don't know you touch. I don't think you really know how much you touch them because just coming in contact with an employee enough, even when I go to Bay Shore, Gellert, or Lincoln or wherever, it touches the lives of people and it's integral. So thank you very much and thank you to all of you. And you're what makes everything works with full of positivity. So looking forward to the ideas we're here to support. So thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. Thank you, Councilmember Giovanni. What I'd like to do is present this proclamation to you both, and then we'll open it up for comments, if any, that you folks may have as well. All right? So if I can have my colleagues step up to the front, and we'll present the proclamation. And if you would like to take any photos and staff, Denise, I see you're ready because you always have that iPad, so... We're going up to the front.
You should too.
Do you want to do the same, Vice Mayor?
How do you want to do this, Denise? Do you want to stand this way? Do you see everybody that way?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody.
Where's a good area where I can see myself? Where's a good spot where I can see?
Where you can see?
Yeah. Awesome. Are we, are we all, all, one photo together?
Yeah.
You know the funniest thing is I'm in the middle. Let's do that.
I, yeah, I'll be ready. Thank you.
Hey Romeo, everybody get close.
All right, if you can't see the lens, you won't be in the picture.
Ready on three. One, two, three.
Recreation.
Recreation.
Thank you.
I love that. Congratulations.
Congrats, 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 congrats.
Hey, let's see. Where's Tom? Hold on for a second, Nate.
Oh, yeah.
Where is he?
You gotta hit the gavel.
Where is he? Where did Tom go? Leilani?
I don't know. Where's Tom? Where's our city manager? I don't know.
We'll pause for a second for our city. There he is. All right.
There's our city manager.
The very important person. We want you to be here, sir, and when the commissioners make comments. I just want you to be a part. All right. Chair Montez, oh, who's going to start first?
I'll go first, yeah.
Commissioner Nate Ortiz.
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sylvester and councilmembers for this opportunity and proclamation for July being Parks and Recreation Month. It's an exciting opportunity. Like you guys said, is long-lasting relationships, lifelong relationships. About ten, twelve years ago, I started off at Westlake as a Recreation Three staff. Ray Denise was my supervisors, so is David Zetzer. But honestly, shout out and thank you so much to Denise Brown and the entire Recreation staff. Since when I started here in the commission at 2018 and we've seen what happened in 2020, Recreation stepped up for the community. The way they fed the seniors, the way they made sure that the programs and the essential programs that serve the communities from youth to the seniors, they were taken care of no matter where they were, whether they were in the facilities or at their own home. So again, shout out to the entire Recreation staff. And we're going to continue as a commission to work for you guys and do whatever we can to bring back prior programs, elevate the current programs, as well as our facilities as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, can folks hear me? Good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before I begin, because I'm pretty, I'm a rookie commissioner to all the staff. My name is Fernando. I am currently your Chair of the Recreation Commission. Thank you for this great gesture of appreciation and support. But I think I speak for my fellow commissioners and everyone here when I say that the true reward is the work. The work itself, being able to provide and serve the community. Like I said earlier, I'm just barely a year or over a year being a commissioner. It was January of 2024, and at like the 11th hour, Ray Brenaventura out of nowhere said my name to be nominated. And now currently, under the list of appointees for Teresa Perranio, I'm still learning about this vast, wide, and amazing department. As commissioners, you know, we have the privilege of representing our residents, being advocates and cheerleaders for the department. We only come like bare minimum once a month to meet those meetings. But each staff here comes in early in the day, late at night, every day, working to make sure the department runs smoothly, efficiently, and to make sure that our residents are served every day. And so we stand on their shoulders. We stand on Denise's shoulders, on Edgardo's, Romeo's, Jennifer's, and everyone else in this room and outside of this room. And so as commissioners, you know, we have a lot of ideas, like Councilmember De Giovanni said in our last meeting. We have a list of goals that we want to pursue in partnership with the department, in partnership with the council, ensuring that the scholarship fund is well-fed and is ensured that every resident gets to have access to such amazing services so that they can participate in our programs in the department to make sure that these special and cultural events are run every year because they cost money and we have to work hard to make sure that the money comes in to make sure those events are possible every year. And so I'm excited for this month to be celebrated, but let's celebrate the department every day because they do the work every day. And so once again, thank you, Council Vice Mayor, Mayor who isn't here, our amazing councilmembers. Thank you to the staff who is here and to everyone else outside of the room. Like I said earlier, we stand on our shoulders and, you know, let's get to work. So thank you.
All right. Commissioners, thank you so much. Again, it's really appreciated as to what you do. And there's an adage, you can't teach an old guy new tricks. But you know what, Chair Montez, you just taught me one. You said something that I've never heard before, and I wrote it down, and I'm going to remember it. You know, and it kind of alludes to what Councilmember Manalo had said in that you folks do this on a volunteer basis. But what you said really took to heart with me, and I'm going to remember this. You said, "True reward is the work." And that is, I mean, that is so fitting as to what you folks do. So thank you for that. I can feel the passion that you folks have. And congratulations. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. I had to take a brief pause because that was really up there for me. All right, the next item on the agenda is another proclamation, and this to the Pediatric Brain Tumor Research Awareness Month. And with that, I'm going to ask my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Manalo, if she would present the proclamation. Justin?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the honor of this. You know, I met a young woman named Isabel Tolentino who really brought this to my attention. She's actually a resident here in Daly City. And it's Pediatric Brain Tumor Research Awareness Month in July 2025 here in Daly City, whereas pediatric brain tumors are the leading cause of cancer-related deaths in children, creating an urgent need for continued scientific discovery, clinical innovation, and compassionate care. Whereas the University of California, San Francisco, is at the forefront of pediatric brain tumor research, leading groundbreaking efforts to better understand how the brain develops and to develop more effective personalized treatments for children diagnosed with brain tumors. And whereas researchers across the country are exploring critical areas such as developmental biology of the brain, tumor migration in early embryonic stages, novel immunotherapies, and small molecule inhibitors to treat conditions like medulloblastoma and brainstem glioma. And whereas the city of Daly City recognized the vital importance of pediatric brain tumor research and proudly supports institutions and collaborative networks that advance the medical breakthroughs and improve the quality of life for children and families facing these life-threatening diagnoses. And whereas the multi-institutional efforts such as the Pacific Pediatric Neuro-oncology Consortium, PNOC, PNO-C, and the Children's Oncology Group are bringing together top hospitals and researchers to conduct clinical trials and deliver targeted therapies tailored to a child's unique tumor profile. And whereas these collaborative interdisciplinary efforts represent the best of scientific partnership and medical innovation, offering renewed hope to families and laying the foundation for a healthier future. Um, now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Das Magbawal, mayor and, uh, members of the city council hereby proclaim July twenty twenty-five as Pediatric Brain Tumor Research Awareness Month and express our full support for continued investment in science, treatment, and advocacy that brings hope, healing, and better outcomes to children everywhere. And today, we are going to give the proclamation to South San Francisco Brain Explorations. Um, for their dedication, they just had a toy drive, um, just recently on Saturday, um, for the children, um, that are un- undergoing, um, unfortunately, um, you know, these, um, diseases and, um, I, I thought it was really commend, commending them that they talk about neuroscience and how important it is for, um, young people like themselves to dive into neuroscience, maybe explore it, maybe become scientists, maybe become doctors, but highlight and educate even ourselves, like us as adults. Um, so that advocacy is so huge. Um, we wanna say thank you for that. And I think we also have other folks here representing, um, Daly City as well, and I'd like them, uh, to also come up. So if you can please come up Isabel Tolentino and your colleagues that are here. And you, you can share your names and, and, and everything with everyone. So this is the young people that are our leaders now.
Um, good evening, um, Councilmember Justlin, Vice Mayor Sylvester, and Councilmember G D Giovanni. Um, on behalf of S S F Brain Explorations, we would gladly receive this proclamation and we would like to thank you all for seeing our dedication that we brought into this, um, toy drive um, to support the children suffering from these, um, brain conditions. And, um, the purpose of the toy drive was initially, we saw how like the current administration was taking away funds from different healthcare systems and we wanted, um, to bring a smile towards, um, these children's faces in despite of, um, the darkness and like with how like toys and like recessions and how the deep funds are like making, um, these valuable things, um, inaccessible more and more each day. We just wanted to focus on the positive aspect and, yeah.
Once again, um, my name is Tanya. I, um, represent the South City side of all of this, but, um, thank you so much for this proclamation and it really means a lot. And it shows like our progress towards combating neurological disorders within our community and now also reaching out to Daly City, which is like amazing since we're like, um, going towards a different community as well. And thank you so much. I just don't know what to say. And we hope to continue our fight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber and I'm a new intern to this program. And the toy drive, it really like touched my heart a lot because, uh, there's so many children and people that are struggling with neurological conditions and the fact that we're able to, uh, help them and bring a smile to their faces really makes my day knowing that I have, uh, family members or people around me that go through the same stuff. And it's just a great thing that, um, I can provide, uh, some help and brings people happiness even though it might not be the people around me or like I know them personally. But the fact that I'm able to make someone's day, like it just makes my day as well.
Uh, hello, my name is Annabelle and I'm also a new intern at the Sprint Exploration Program. When I heard about it, I was very interested because I've always wanted to give back to the community, especially in sciences and neurological, um, um, conditions. Because I know a lot of people personally to me that have suffered to illnesses that, um, because of this economy, not all of us have the resources to be able to help these people. So I've always wanted to give back to the community and help everyone.
All right, thank you, uh, so much. I'll open it up to my colleagues if they would like to provide any comments. I'll, first off, Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Well, as you know, first of all, I'm humbled and grateful to be able to, thank you for allowing me to speak the other day at your forum. It was very, very inspiring that, um, along with, uh, Councilmember Mark Nagallish, former mayor of South City, and my colleague, uh, Justin Manalo, that we were able to have that opportunity to reach out. Because neuroscience is, as you know, and when we spoke about the epilepsy and there's so many things that affect the brain and we're talking about injuries, sports injuries, and neurological that come up. This is the center, our computer of our brain and many things come up that they don't even recognize. Parents don't recognize and they need a safe space. And then because of the Medicaid cuts, when we spoke about that, that the, the Medicaid cuts, they won't have access to healthcare. So I think commend all of you. I look forward to it and, and I hope that we can partner with South City and with also, so I want to recognize that these young ladies, um, some are from El Camino High School and people know that our high school district in Daly City actually goes into El Camino. So, and it's no surprise, these are some, not all. And then, um, whatever reasons they came to the program, whether it's personal or not. So I commend you. I look forward to working with you and I'm sure our colleagues and that we can expand the program and, uh, within our Daly City and see what we can do to become partners. So that's my commitment to you and I'm so proud of each one of you. Thank you very much for the opportunity. And let's keep going and educate those children. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Di Giovanni. Uh, I'd like to thank Councilmember, uh, th- thanks for, uh, advising that you, both you and Councilmember Manalo was there, uh, some sort of forum that was, uh, uh, happening. And I'd like to thank Councilmember, uh, Manalo for your leadership in making this proclamation possible. I'm sure it's the both of you. And had it not been for the both of you attending this forum, this proclamation would not have been made. And, uh, I have to, as Councilmember Di Giovanni, I have to say, I commend all of you for what you do. You said you're going to high school. I would tell you when I was in high school, I didn't have a clue. And the mere fact that you're already doing this to help spread awareness is something that's very, very important, especially for our kids. Our kids are afflicted with different types of diseases. And, uh, I heard, uh, you know, coming from the brain, that's the most important organ in your body. And, uh, you know, words cannot explain the in-depth gratitude that I have and to be a part of this awareness. So thank you for what you do and I wish you continued success in this endeavor to take care of, uh, pediatrics and the children who are in fact our future, just like you are. Thank you. Councilmember Manalo?
Thank you Vice Mayor. Um, you know, when they say it really is, uh, comes from an idea or action, right? We talk about when you wanna do something, you just take that action. And I wanna say thank you to Isabella and the whole organization, uh, because Isabella reached out. Um, and she said, um, one of the questions she had for the forum is what have you done to support the work? And in that realm, because of that question, that prompted this. So that we cannot be educated ourselves, but now the community of Daly City is educated. And so it really comes from a spark that each and every one of you has done. And now we're able to learn more and make sure that we really combat, um, you know, this type of, um, unfortunate situation where there's, we need more, um, solutions and, and really technology to figure out how to really heal all of these brain tumors. So thank you for all of that you do. And I think, um, Vice Mayor.
Ah, okay, shall we?
Joining them? All three of us, yeah. Ladies, congratulations. Thank you, great.
Wait, one more Leilani. I shouldn't be home. This should be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leilani.
Why is everyone getting up?
It goes our audience.
Yeah, yeah, it's good. So now we're just gonna walk and go through. Am I firing?
I am.
Okay.
Cause they're here.
Okay, when you make, when you get to it. All right.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you to my colleagues as well. Thank you to staff. And, uh, we'll go ahead and move on. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, uh, of the regular meeting of July fourteenth. I'll entertain a motion to accept a minute.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Minutes have passed. The next item is for the approval of the agenda for tonight, uh, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Ever first? I will gladly second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We do, this is a time for oral comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes unless modified by the mayor. The council cannot take on any action on any matter raised under this particular section. With that being said, I do have a speaker card. And I'd like to call up Ms. Emma Mappa. Emma, come on up, Emma. Don't be afraid. We won't bite you now. No, we go. Come on up. I, I didn't see a particular item you had wanted to speak on, so I guess it's just, uh, in general, a comment you would like to make? Okay, great. You have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you. Don't time me yet. I'd like to say hi to Pam, who, uh, 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 talked about Jessica to be ca- um, mayor. That's how they, I met her. And, uh, Rose, she gives up her time, uh, for free as, um, a lawyer, okay? Those are the three I know. Okay, time me. Okay, so I live on Dorchester and I want something done because on Dorchester, people run and they go into, uh, John Daly and on Eastmore, they run the stop or whatever to get on John Daly. Um, I have witnessed two times that two cars have, uh, ran, they ran into other cars and put them on the sidewalk, one in front of my house and one next door. And now we have someone who hit the, uh, s- s- uh, the stop sign and it fell. And now we, uh, no one's done anything. I know that police have come to take, um, reports or whatever, but there's nothing done, okay? And this has been gone for a long, long time. And I know the city manager can tell them what to do. Please, I would like bumpers on those roads to, uh, slow down the people coming across because we have many accidents. And I would like some lights for us, the seniors, so we can see the sidewalks coming up because I fell and hit my face. And I thank God I live in a place where people really like each other. Two cars stopped to help me, okay? And one car said, "I'm taking you home and you need to go to the doctors." But that's because of the sidewalk, there's no light, we need lights, I'm a senior. There's many seniors in Daly City and I would like also, please stop the clock, I have more to say. I would like our, uh, Westlake District to be beautiful again. I would like someone to tell people, "Hey, clean up your yard because they look awful." Oh, can I have, can I have Josephine and Linda's two minutes?
Oh, I, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to give you their two minutes if I had a card from them.
They don't have a card.
They don't have a, well, you can fill out one. If you give me one, absolutely. Would you kindly hand these two ladies a card? Ms. Mappa?
Um, okay.
Please continue.
I, I would.
I trust you that the cards are coming.
I, I would like to say I'm the mouse. They're very shy. I'm not shy.
Okay.
Because Daly City or Westlake used to be a very nice area to live in, okay? Very, very nice. The streets were beautiful, the yards were beautiful, and we didn't have ten million cars on the, on the side. When you come down these streets, they're narrow now because they're full of these cars. And, um, what do you call it? Uh, people's business, their trucks are all over the, come on. Go to your business place and park your own, uh, whatever, uh, you know, trucks. Don't park them on our street. We don't need your cars. I don't care if you have ten people living in your house and ten, uh, cars out there. Hey, you live there, but don't put the, you know, those v- uh, those big vans and all this other stuff that doesn't belong on our street. And I don't care if your, your garden looks like awful, but you know, be proud like before. What I used, I was, I've been here for forty-five years and our streets and our neighborhood were beautiful. But today, there's no respect. Come on, give us a little respect. I would like the homeowners to come back, but they said that's not gonna happen. I want you to give them a citation if their house looks ugly. If their yard is ugly, if their vans are parked there and they have a business and they wanna use our street. I would like you to fix the sidewalks so I don't stumble on them. I would like more lights for us because we, you know, we do fall. So can you do that? You know, can you guys do that for us? We want, we want Westlake to be beautiful again. Proud to be home, not come home and find, trying to find parking because everybody else is parked out there. You don't even live in the ne- the neighborhood and you're still parking in our street. What is that all about? Give me a break. Go park somewhere else. If you need to park, oh, did you fill out another? We did.
Go ahead, Ms. Mappa, you get, uh, so we got two cards, so go ahead.
So I, I mean, I don't know if you ever lived in, in Westlake. Come on. Westlake used to be beautiful. We, we used to have lawns where you had, uh, everybody's house was painted the right color, not purple or pink. And we never had, what do you call those? Uh, bed and breakfast. Now we have bed and breakfast on our street. Can you believe that? Don't they need a permit for that kind of stuff? If you're running a bed and breakfast, come on. And then, um, if you have, I don't care if your relatives are in your house and there's ten people in there, I don't care. But please, can you save some of the parking spots for the people who live there? And if the police comes, could you please, please, you know, report that there was an accident? The guy hit my sister's car, the car went onto the lawn and the guy said, "Oh, there was nobody injured, so we can't, we're not gonna cite, give him a citation." And he said to me, "I'm late for dinner. I'm meeting my friends." The guy was like seventy-two years old. He wasn't old, you know? He could read the signs, but no, he's went right through the road. So I would like some bumpers, some lights. Is that asking too much? I mean, we live in Daly City. We live in, in Westlake. Westlake used to be- Westlake used to be so beautiful. You wanted to live there. Today, I don't know. Would you like to live there? Come and see my street. We used to have a beautiful street. But now, in across the way, we need those bumpers too because they just zoom right through the intersection. They don't care. A guy was driving and he threw paper out. And I wanted to say something. My neighbor pulled me back. "Don't say anything because they're gonna come back and shoot you." Are you kidding me? This is my neighborhood. Can you do something about it, Mayor? Can you do something about it?
Well, Ms. Mappa, we appreciate you've definitely raised a lot of concerns and it takes our constituents and residents of our city to come and report this because you are our eyes and ears. So I've listened. Uh, there was a few ideas presented. You have a few directors here in the audience. I'm sure they've taken a few notes. So, uh, we'll move forward and, uh, and see if there's anything that can be done. We can't make a decision tonight.
No, I know.
But at least we have the directors here.
But you will do something?
Well, I can't promise you that, but.
You will do something, right?
We can't promise you, but at least we know. Okay?
I can respond a little bit.
Oh, you would you like to, uh, city manager?
Just to echo what the mayor is saying, we have directors here. They'll look into it and I'll see to it that they look into what you've brought to us tonight.
Yeah, we're not asking for too much, you know? We live there. I've been there for forty-five years.
Ms., Ms. Mappa, I do like the color pink, though.
You like the color?
No, I just. Thank you so much.
You wanna check in? That's a bed and breakfast.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mappa. And thank you, uh, uh, to the other folks who allowed Ms. Mappa to speak on your behalf. And I'll like, matter of fact, uh, I'll acknowledge at least one of you. Hey, great job. Oh, okay, this is, thank you again so much. We do got two cards coming from them, right? I wanna keep. It's, it's in the works. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. All right, thank you very much. Yes. Oh, yes. Uh, Councilmember Manalo would like to make a comment.
Thank you so much, but unrelated to your comments because we can't make any decisions as the vice mayor mentioned. But I just wanted to say, it's so great to see you. I know it's been quite some time and I remember Dorchester Street and just being out and about and your welcoming household and, um, just being going and you just welcomed me in and with your beautiful, uh, family in, in the prayer group. And so I just wanted to remember that. That was twenty sixteen. Um, I also got to meet your lovely daughter, who I know is also an attorney, um, at an event recently. And so, um, I just wanted to say, um, she also mentioned, you know, you and everything. And I just wanna extend my, also my deepest condolences. Thank you.
Great. Anyone, did you want to make comment, Pam, or anything?
We can't address the issues, but we know we can thank you for being here because it's very important. Your voice matters, so. And we have our city manager, he always takes really good notes and he'll do a follow-up. And thank the vice mayor as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Listening.
All right. Thank you. I do have another card, uh, Mr. Jason Del Rosario. And he's representing his son, Benito Del Rosario Junior. Mr. Del Rosario, welcome.
It's at the end.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah.
It's okay.
Hi. Okay, I know, um, Pamela, I, I sent a, uh, picture. Yeah, I know you're gonna read it later, but, um, but, um, I'm, I'm here to, um, speak since I, it just came up in my mind. Um, there's, do you know about, about the house on five-five-three King Drive? A burned-out house on five-five-three King Drive. It's between Geller and, uh.
Five-five-three?
Five-five-three. It's a burned-out house.
Uh, what's the, five-five-three?
Yeah, five-five-three King Drive, yeah. It's, it's down the hill.
Something Drive?
Yeah, Drive, King Drive, yeah.
King Drive?
King Drive.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, five-five-three King Drive. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you know about the house. So the, the neighbor, five-five-seven, was my father's, um, friends from PG uni when, and like, um, when I was talking with them, um, I, I mentioned about, like, that house next door to them. It's, it's happened, I don't know, five years ago. And I was just wondering what the status is because I, I know that house has been, like, uh, um, boarded up and, um, just it burned ever since. And I was, I was wondering if I could get a status update sometime about that, so.
Five-five-three?
Yeah, five-five-three King Drive, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
You're, you're asking about the status and what's going on? Was it five-five-seven or five-five-three?
Well, five-five-seven, it's, it's my fa- um, there, there's a married couple next door. They used to work, they're friends with my dad.
Okay.
PG uni, so.
All right, yeah, basically, uh, what I'm hearing is that you would like more information as to what's going on with the house.
Yeah, next door, five-five-three, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you can get that, yeah.
No, they.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Del Rosario. Okay. All right, moving ahead, uh, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda appear to be routine and may be approved one roll call vote of the city council. However, there shall be no separate discussion of the matters on the consent agenda unless requested by a member of the city council. All right, so.
Through the vice mayor, I'd like to pull item number five.
Number five?
Thank you.
Is there any others?
Um, vice mayor, I'd like to, uh, pull item number eight.
Number eight. Okay, so I take it the motion is all items on the consent agenda is to be approved with the exception of items number five and number eight. Someone wanna make that motion?
Motion to approve agenda with the exception of item number five and eight.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, uh, abstentions? Any no's? All right. Uh, aye. All right, the consent agenda is approved, then we'll start off with item number five. Mr. Lee Brown, okay.
Good evening, members of the council. Tonight, we are asking you to authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement with the Daly City Dolphins Aquatics Club for the use of GeoMonopool. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a use agreement with the Daly City Dolphins Aquatics Club for the use of the GeoMonopool located at the campus of Westmore High School. The term of the proposed agreement is July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. The Daly City Dolphins Aquatic Club was established in nineteen seventy-five through the Daly City Parks and Recreation Department and originally operated out of the GeoMonopool at Westmore High School. By the late nineteen nineties, the original pool had deteriorated and was ultimately demolished. In two thousand and ten, the city of Daly City and the Jefferson Union High School District jointly funded and opened a new GeoMonopool. At this time, the Dolphins paid two thousand dollars per month despite utilizing most of the city's allocated pool hours, which is about sixty percent. A new use agreement approved by the city council on January ninth, twenty twelve, gradually increased the monthly fee from two thousand to forty, forty-four hundred dollars, totaling fifty-two thousand dollars annually. This cost became unsustainable for the Dolphins, prompting new negotiations in twenty fourteen. After eighteen months of discussion, a revised three-year agreement from fiscal year twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen was approved by the city council on July eleventh, twenty sixteen. In early twenty nineteen, staff initiated renewal discussions. Both parties agreed to continue under the existing terms with the Dolphins requesting an extension of the agreement from three years to five. Over the past five years, several adjustments were made to the Dolphins' scheduled hours, days, and lane usage. These changes were due to pandemic-related restrictions, modifications in the Jefferson Union High School District bell schedules, and updates to the Westmore High School swim team's practice time. All changes were made by mutual consent of both the Dolphins and the Department of Recreation Services. In fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the Dolphins have paid three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars per month for the use of the specified lanes in the pool during specified hours. As stated above, the term of the proposed agreement is July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. Under the terms of the proposed agreement, the Dolphins would pay the city of Daly City four thousand and fifty-four per month for the period covering July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six for an annual total of forty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars, plus an additional thirty-four hundred dollars per swim meet hosted by the Daly City Dolphins. The monthly rate will increase each July through the term of the agreement based on the Consumer Price Index San Francisco Bay Area as reported by the United States Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics from the prior calendar year, not to exceed five percent in any given year of the agreement. Under the terms of the proposed agreement, the Dolphins will have the same access to the pool as they currently have described in Exhibit A. Staff is available, as well as the Daly City Dolphins team, to, um, provide any additional information desired by the mayor or the council.
Okay, thank you, Director Brown. Uh, I'll open it up to my colleagues if they have questions. And we'll first start off with Councilmember Dejivani.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Brown, for, for all of this. And if the Daly City Dolphins, would you come up, please? First, I'd like to thank Ms. Brown for the long-term relationship that we've all had with our Daly City Dolphins. I know this is not the proper place for this agenda item, but I solely support the Daly City Dolphins and that I know that you've been around since nineteen seventy-five, which is a lot. And I think that, um, we as a council, we can, uh, make sure that we, we look into that and make sure that you're recognized for, you know, you are a staple in our community. And I remember how you are always highlighted and, and everything else and things that we can do to support. Um, and I know Ms. Brown has been so supportive, as well as our city manager, and thanking you for the longtime relationship, but also thanking you that at some point that we can recognize the longevity of, uh, that we are so lucky to have the Daly City Dolphins for a long time. And I don't wanna use age, but nineteen seventy-five, that's, that's a while. But, um, and, and look forward to, uh, longtime, uh, support that you've been such a great thing for the children and everyone else in the community. It made such a big positive impact along with Ms. Brown and our relationship with the city. And I know that the Jefferson, um, is gonna be opening up a pool and then probably you'll be over, but this, everything's part of our community. You're, you're part of Daly City, so I just wanna make sure that, thanking you and thanking Ms. Brown and the continued, uh, friendship and long-term friendship that, that goes on. And sometimes we don't get to see you, but, um, it's important to recognize. And thank you. So thank you very much, so.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you, thank you for your support.
All right, Councilmember, uh, Dejivani, thank you, uh, for that. Councilmember Manalo, do you have any comments or anything?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. I just wanna acknowledge the Daly City Dolphins, you know? Um, I, my family moved here in nineteen eighty-eight. And so, um, really, the programs that you do, I know there was a critical point in which, um, I think the history has said, you know, there was a juncture in which keeping you here was so important. Um, you know, we have a colleague that was really a proponent of that. I wanna give where acknowledgement is due for, um, former Mayor Ray Bada Ventura, who is really an advocate for you all. And to see that continue today, um, you have our full support because we know that, I mean, it's, it's so important what you all do, day in and day out. And I, I think, you know, as you see our director Denise Brown's face, like, she understands it as well. You basically have, you know, family here, a home here with, with all that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Uh, yes, I've been on council for a while and I echo some of the sentiments that both council members have made. Uh, I've been up there a couple of times. I haven't swam, but, uh. I've never seen you. But I did swim to graduate high school, though. That's a long time ago. But, uh, needless to say, uh, uh, Councilmember, uh, Dejivani, thank you for pulling this item because this also increases awareness to our community. And so you've heard enough from all of us. Would you folks like to say anything before we call for the vote?
Yeah, no, I'm, uh, I'm head coach Jacob. I've been the head coach since twenty twenty-two. Um, I've been a part of the team since, well, I was a coach twenty nineteen. I actually swam in Daly City back in twenty thirteen, I believe, so, um, fairly young. And I'm definitely, like, not as close to age of the team as it is, so.
Yeah.
No, but, I mean, I don't have any other questions. And then this is our board of president, uh, Jonathan Lee.
Yeah, nice to meet y'all. Good eve- good evening, councilmembers. Um, yeah, really appreciate your support. And, you know, a couple of just interesting stats that we have, you know, over sixty percent of our swimmers actually have addresses out in Daly City. Um, so we definitely, uh, serve the city first. And, you know, we have, we serve the surrounding cities, San Francisco, San Francisco, San Bruno, et cetera. Uh, but they choose to swim in Daly City because of our coaches, our staff, our programs, um, and even the aquatic programs too that Daly City hosts. So it's a good partnership that we, we have with Daly City Parks and Recs to really grow the community of just teaching swimming first as a survival skill. And once, you know, kids get really interested in it, you know, moving up into the competition side of swimming. Um, so, you know, obviously it's an important life skill, um, just growing up as a child, but also opening up the doors and opportunity for them to swim competitively year-round, um, which, you know, GeoMonopool, Daly City Parks and Recs, and our staff and coaches provide. So definitely appreciate your support.
All right, thank you so much, gentlemen. Uh, Denise, is there anything you don't do? All right, so, uh, being that we have no further comments, we don't have any cards for comments from the, uh, public. So what I'd like to do is entertain the motion to accept item number five on the consent.
Accept item number five?
Uh, motion by, uh, Councilmember Dejivani.
Second?
Second by Councilmember Manalo. All those in favor?
Aye.
The item say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? I vote aye as well. The motion passes. Congratulations and continue the great work. And thank you, Ms. Brown, for the collaboration with the Daly City Dolphins. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item number eight. Accept and appropriate, appropriate local shuttle program funds for the Daly City Bay Shore Shuttle. Mr. Chu?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, item number eight is to accept and appropriate local shuttle program funds for the Daly City Bay Shore Shuttle. Uh, since twenty fourteen, the city has operated the Bay Shore Shuttle in the Bay Shore neighborhood using various grants to finance shuttle operations. Uh, the cost for the shuttle is estimated to be approximately one million five hundred and seventy-six thousand for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, as well as fiscal years twenty-six, twenty-seven. And that includes shuttle operation costs, marketing, and administrative overhead. Uh, in February of twenty twenty-five, the city council authorized staff to submit a grant application requesting one million one hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars in funding to continue the operations of the Bay Shore Shuttle service. Uh, in June of twenty twenty-five, CCA Board of Directors approved nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars of congestion relief plan funds for the Bay Shore Shuttle. This, uh, amount is less than the original request. However, uh, due to, um, discussions with the current shuttle operator, a lower operating cost was negotiated for the next two years. The acceptance of the nine hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars grant funds and appropriation of the eighty-five thousand requested local match, an execution of funding agreement is needed to continue the Bay Shore Shuttle program. Uh, the grant funds will cover approximately seventy-five percent of the operating costs for both fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, as well as fiscal years twenty-six, twenty-seven. The twenty-five percent matching funds, uh, will be met partially by a different grant, an LTP grant. The remaining matching funds, uh, will be provided by the additional requested eighty-five thousand dollars um, in unallocated Measure A local funds. Uh, this action will appropriate nine hundred, uh, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars of, uh, CRP, which is the, um, congestion relief plan funds. And it will appropriate eighty-five thousand in unallocated Measure A funds for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, um, Bay Shore Shuttle project account. In summary, staff is recommending that the city council accept and appropriate the nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars uh, under the local, uh, shuttle program component of the CRP for the Daly City Bay Shore Shuttle. Uh, appropriate eighty-five thousand of unallocated Measure A funds as local match to fund the Bay Shore Shuttle. And lastly, to authorize the city manager or his district to execute the funding agreement for the grant from CCA. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Uh, who pulled item number eight? Councilmember Manalo? Okay, I, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, and thank you, Director Chu, for your presentation. You know, I pulled this item because we know how important it is. Thank you Vice Mayor and thank you Director Chu for your presentation, you know, I pulled this item because we know how important it is, you know. This was here for since twenty fourteen and really as we hear your presentation, it really takes a lot of sources to continue this this essential need in our community. Really connecting the Bay Shore community is so important, we know that it's further out or towards that area and so when we talk about transportation, whether it is for our older adults or families or folks that are just trying to get to one place another, I want to commend you for finding the resources and to continue this in our community and so I wanted to pull that item to show how much it takes to bring something like this in fruition, but also know that we will continue to advocate for this resource for our community, especially the Bay Shore community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Councilmember Dejivani, you have any questions or thoughts?
Thank you, thank you Vice Mayor. I just want to make you, Mr. Chu, you always looking, I don't know where you find that money, you must lift up those rocks as I remember Vice Mayor would have mentioned that one time because it's amazing that you and your staff find it because you know it's needed and then we to promote the need of this and they changed the line to make it amenable to the people in the Bay Shore so that they listen to the people, which I thought that was great and the T A and and I was on the the board C CAG for five years and then commute.org where they programmed the shuttles, as you know, that Shirley is also an integral part of that, our engineer. And you found the money and the people are appreciative because it's so far out past Guadalupe and then they still don't have a grocery store to go to and they don't even have a post office other than not unless they go to San Francisco or they go to Brisbane and they don't even have a place if they write their mail, they have to, they don't even see where they can't, they don't have a mailbox. So these people, we when we think about rural, most people think about like acres of nothing there. But I would consider a lot of our little pockets, so you try to do the connectivity and I appreciate it, thank you very much for doing that, especially for our Bay Shore seniors, thank you. Thank you Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejivani. A couple of questions that I have, matter of fact, Councilmember Dejivani alluded to it. Whoever sits on C CAG, thank you so much for the advocacy.
Happy to do so.
Yeah.
And I if I'm not mistaken, I believe Councilmember Dejivani, you kind of took over when I used to be on commute.org and if I'm not mistaken, you're still on that one. And commute.org also gives money for the shuttle, but what I would like to do is address some of the issues because you said something a word and that's congestion relief, which I think is a very, very important part of the shuttle service because I'm definitely concerned about reducing the greenhouse gases effect. Councilmember Manalo had made mention about transportation for our seniors. Councilmember Dejivani had made mention about the food and access to a post office and believe me, I've been out there in the Bay Shore and being out there in the Bay Shore and just walking up one hill was enough for me to make sure I respect all the postal carriers because they do it every day. And can you imagine how much gas and exhaust is expended going up those hills in the Bay Shore? So this is something that's sorely, sorely needed and I appreciate the work that you do. Councilmember Dejivani took the words out of my mouth because that's the first thing I wrote down, you turned over another rock. And finding these funds, so great job and thank you, Councilmember Manalo for pulling this item, which I think is very, very important. All right, unless there are any other comments, I'll entertain the motion. Defer to Councilmember Manalo since she pulled it.
Thank you Vice Mayor, happy to motion item number eight.
Second?
A second, second by Councilmember Dejivani. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? The motion carries, thank you, Mr. Chu for your work. That concludes the end of the consent agenda. The next item on the agenda is to designate a vote voting delegate and alternate alternate for the League of California Cities General Assembly, this happens every year. Leilani, did you want to provide, okay, good, Leilani Ramos.
Good evening Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Before you this evening is a request to designate a voting delegate and alternates to cast ballots on behalf of the city of Daily City at the League of California Cities General Assembly scheduled on October ten, twenty twenty-five. As way of background, the League of California Cities holds an annual conference and expo. This year it is scheduled for October eight through ten in Long Beach. Each year, the league membership considers and acts on resolutions that establish Cal City's policy. To vote at the general assembly, the city council must designate a voting delegate. The city council may also appoint up to two alternate voting delegates, one of whom may vote if the designated voting delegate is unable to serve this role. This year, Mayor Dr. Rod Dos McBual and councilmembers Jazan Manalo, Teresa Perronio and Pamela Dejivani are registered to attend the conference. The deadline to submit the names of the voting delegate and alternates is September twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the Vice Mayor or councilmembers.
Okay, thank you, Leilani. You said the deadline to submit the names is September twenty-fourth?
Correct.
Twenty twenty-five. I'll give a consensus amongst my colleagues here, do you want to wait until then or we'll automatically have the mayor as the voting delegate for Daily City? What's the thought?
I'm happy with that, Vice Mayor, to have a mayor Das be the representative and delegate.
Okay, and the alternate, who who else is going? Is it Perronio, she she going?
We have Councilmember Manalo, Perronio and Dejivani.
Perronio, Manalo.
And Vice Mayor.
Oh, no, I'm not going and Dejivani. Okay, I believe, I don't know if this would apply in this particular case, but I'm not going to be attending, however. I know in one particular regional committee that I serve on and that's Council of Cities, if the mayor's not pres- present, then the alternate or the voting delegate would be the former past mayor. So if that's the case, if Councilmember Manalo is going, I'd like to delegate, of course, we take a vote, that Councilmember Manalo be the alternate, one of the alternates behind Dr. Rod, the mayor.
Thank you Vice Mayor, I accept, I'll be there, so I think that, yeah.
Okay.
I'll be presenting there, so I'm happy to accept, thank you.
All right, so we have one more and we're not going to take a vote, we'll vote on the slate, is that right or you want to do each individual, Madam City Attorney?
You can vote as a slate.
As the slate, okay.
You're designating the vote and.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. I would like to nominate Councilmember Dejivani to be the third alternate for the voting. So I'll need a second on that.
Sure.
Councilmember Dejivani, would you accept?
Sure.
She will accept, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the slate would be Dr. Rod Dos McBual as the primary voting delegate. Councilmember Juslin Manalo as the second, the first alternate.
First alternate.
And Councilmember Dejivani as the second alternate, so we have a primary and two alternates, okay? So I'll entertain the motion to accept those names as a slate.
Motion to accept the slate per mentioned by Vice Mayor.
Second?
Okay, we have a first and a second, any further discussion? And this is a resolution, so I'll need a voice a voice vote. Roll call vote, okay.
Ms. Dejivani?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Doctor, oh, sorry, Mr. Sylvester.
Sylvester, aye. All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Ramos, thank you so much for that update. All right, moving ahead, we're almost done, folks. The next item on the agenda is appointment for board commission membership or committee appointments, are there any? Okay, hearing none. Next item's thirteen, which is council committee reports. Anyone? Councilmember Manalo, absolutely, please.
Thank you, thank you Vice Mayor, I wanted to share with everyone, I did attend the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. That agency is really a regional body that ensures that our water rates are fair. For those watching, our water, majority of it does come from Hetch Hetchy. That is managed by the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. And so this body was created to really become an advocacy organization to make sure S F P U C doesn't monopolize at one point and so you'll have water agencies all the way up and down, all the way toward San Jose, all the way across, you know, our jurisdiction, just to make sure that we're all fighting to make sure we have safe and clean water. And that meeting, we did have an update on what the the reservoir and how it's going and also a presentation on looking at affordability rate from S F P U C with their water rate customers. Further down the line, Basca will also do a study, an affordability study for all of the users, meaning encompassing our jurisdiction as well. And so with that, we also talked about further steps in regards to like some budgetary items. But I think the next meeting will not be next month but the month after, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, anyone else? All right, moving on, how about city council reports? I'll start with Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you Vice Mayor, I appreciate it. I just wanted to say that we actually have a pop-up coffee shop now, right in the middle of City Hall. Talio's Coffee and Tea and so that's really an innovation with our economic development specialists and to to really have an opportunity for small businesses, so I think that's a great idea because instead of you going out of City Hall, you actually have something in City Hall, so congratulations to Talio's. Also, Dave and Buster's, you know, Dave and Buster's is one of the businesses in Ceremonie, but they did highlight their holiday showcase in summer, meaning if you want to have your party over there, they have a lot of different menus for the holiday season and that was in coordination with Ceremonie with a lot of the Daily City Colma Chamber of Commerce members. And then also I wanted to say, we did miss one of our council meeting, council committee meetings, Vice Mayor, now that I look at my notes. We had, right, a council, well, no, I think it was actually it was me and you.
I don't remember, I think you're always, you're always there, Councilwoman Manalo.
It's okay. So we had a council committee meeting on the parcel in Bay Shore. So Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester and I had a council meeting in regards to the parcel that is owned by the city. We had RFPed it out to Affordable Housing Development. Unfortunately, that affordable housing develop developer no longer can do the project. And so in that committee, it was really important for us to, I think there was direction from both you and I to to tell staff, hey, it's time to put the RFP out, we want to make sure that we get it out to potential developers. It's land by right there on the hill, right next to Cow Palace, so the topography is not easily, you know, developers will have to take some time, but I think, you know, we both said, you know, we got to start now to find someone else to fill in into that, so it the the whole decision will come to city council, but I think the ball is now rolling as I I nod over to our Economic Development Director in that room. Did I miss anything, Vice Mayor? Oh, oh, no, I was just talking about about the Bay Shore piece.
Oh, okay, yeah, Councilmember Manalo, you basically covered, I just wanted to add one part and I thank you for being on the committee and with the advice of the Economic Development Director and the City Attorney, we do have one potential developer and Councilmember Manalo said something, you know, I never forget these quotes, you you know, and and that's how I remember stuff. She said, just because we have a gold coin or a coin, basically a developer who's ready to go, we want to ensure fairness and transparency and we were at, we ask that the RFP goes out to a whole list of developers and not just only one. And it will come here before council for us to finally decide on the final count, the final developer, so thank you for that, Councilmember Manalo, okay.
See, you did remember something, thank you Vice Mayor. Also, I did meet a filmmaker called Reyna Bonta. She actually was also in the FIFA women's soccer team of the Philippines and they actually played the at and won a game. And so she actually has a film about her grandmother really teaching her about her culture. It's a short film and really was wonderful, they had that right there, the Children's Creativity Museum and saw some folks from Daily City trek all the way out there. But hopefully, you know, a plan is to hopefully get that film out here so that everyone can watch it. There is a partnership that we have with Century Twenty-One that maybe if people want to see that film, we can coordinate that. Also wildfire safety is so important, there was an educational forum on Channel twenty-six. Who still watches Channel twenty-six? It's still vital for local folks that watch Channel twenty-six and it was really with P G N E as well as the Philippine American Press Club to highlight the importance of making sure you take the precautions around wildfire. I know that we have our North County Fire Authority who does also the education piece, but it was another avenue to share with our community members how to prevent and be safe and actually have questions directly around climate action and climate change in that respect. Also, I wanted to share that upcoming, we will be having on, for those of you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hope for a sunny day for our National Night Out. And so our National Night Out, we see our acting Chief Christensen right there, the wave to every and that that will be happening on August fifth, Tuesday at our ceremony from five to eight P M. I'm wishing for a sunny evening or at least not windy in in that respect. Also, for those of you that know, Around the Bend, Seafood City will have their grand opening on July thirty-first at nine A M. And so, you know, I think that's been a long time coming, I want to thank Vice Mayor. He's been posting on his Facebook of how excited you you are and I I mean, we need a grocery store, I know at one point Pacific Super was there, but now there'll be a brand new grocery store right at the St. Francis Square with a lot of other restaurants around the bend and that is on the thirty-first. Also, Vice Mayor had a proclamation in honor of John Ayesha Enna, local community leader, which we did go to the memorial service and I know you were mentioning that to me. And Vice Mayor shared a proclamation with the family to honor Ayesha Enna's life. That was the just to honor the legacy of really the amazing work that she has been able to do. And so I hope that And so I hope that, um, everyone can join us, um, for the events that we mentioned. Um, and I think that's it. I don't wanna forget anything on my list. Oh, we also will be having, we had our Samoan-American Samoa flag raising that happened also on the twenty sixth. Um, and so that was the second annual flag raising that we had right here at City Hall. Um, and, and also, I thi- you know, Daly City Partnership had their Family Resource Day. Um, and I just wanna commend the Daly City Partnership. They are really the anchor organization that community members go to if they need any support, um, with, um, rent. If they need support in, um, food resources, um, if they need support also um, an extension of, uh, legal support. They have partners. And so really, they're the one-stop-shop, um, here with the Daly City Partnership. Um, and so, just wanna acknowledge the work that they do. Um, and then lastly, Kapwa Cultural Center. Um, they are a n- new organization that is a social enterprise, helping young people um, really have a safe space to really build and, um, you know, have a community center for them. It's across the street from Daly City. If you all know where, uh, Holy Angels is, they have a social enterprise there. It's called Kapwa Cultural Center, but they reas- yeah, they recently, um, got support from Supervisor David Canapa um, to continue to build, and they, uh, won this amazing bus that was repurposed. Uh, that was like an office as well as a community space. Um, in South Market, it was called Kapwa Cultures, uh, Gardens. And now it was just a beautiful tribute, because they are closing down. Now they have now passed on this really amazing, imagine like a school bus. Um, but then reimagine to have repurposed to a, a space indoor. So, I mean, you have to see it visually, um, but I wanna congratulate them for their work and their grand opening as well. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Councilmember Dejira Boni?
Yeah, um, rather than repeat most of them, but I wanna add in addition, I think we mentioned it earlier, that we, we, we spoke with the South San Francisco Brain Solutions, um, over in South City at their library the other day. And the expansion of teaching the children, to get them interested, they're trying to figure out interactive things to teach children about neuroscience and STEM, to get them stimulated. Believe it or not, there's a vacuum, even though it's a biotech area in South City, and which is part of ours as well. It's a vacuum that is not talked about as the neuroscience. What, uh, everything from autism, epilepsy, and there's so many more things that, that are neurological that we don't even know about. So, um, so we were able to be on that panel, and I'll just mention a couple of them for the sake of time. And Peninsula Family Services had a, um, thank you fair at the Bay Shore Community Center, along with our Bay Shore Library, uh, to thank the Bay Shore community. It's a Peninsula Family Service is a nonprofit, but they also, um, have daycare, s- childhood. They also have senior programming, they do the Got Wheels, um, they do so many things. They had a band outside, it was really, really great. And it could, because we have entered a partnership, and we will be building a brand-new childcare center close to our City Hall and partnering with them. And, uh, it was Jackie Spear that gave us part of the money, and then we did a matching. So hopefully that'll be coming soon, because affordable childcare, as we know, is, uh, not affordable. So, and we need to support the community on that. So those are those two key things that I wanted to mention as well. And then, um, in the closing as well, we all attended the, um, Samoan leader, Ayesha Queen Ayesha Enya, it was her, she passed away in her sleep. And that, uh, she was very influential in many ways, and we'll be able to speak about her later. So our council, along with our city manager, um, were able to be there. Uh, the church is right down the street on Annie Street. And, uh, they're very influential in our Samoan community, and right after the flag raising. So, it's very important that we realize that there's multicultural's here, you know, multicultural's. And so that's very important for all of us. So, that's it for now, I believe. Um, I have SFR Roundtable coming up this week, which I can report on the next time, uh, which our Vice Mayor used to sit on for a long time. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Oh, one quick thing. So I know that we're looking through the budget issues, and that a lot of things come up all the time, and then we all have a wish list. But I know one of the things that's been constant is because of the cuts nationally, and the Medicaid cuts that are coming, that I don't know how we can figure it out, but there may be grants, I'm not sure, but to have our library, um, open on a Saturday. Our Ceremony Library is long overdue, and we need a safe haven, because the programs are being cut um, in so many areas for accessibility, for people to feel safe, to bring their children, and maybe with the healthcare. And then there's also a potential healthcare clinic that's been long overdue, um, by our council that I hope that we can, um, discover, and it would be a free clinic down near top of the hill. Um, from our SF Host Lions, which are Filipinos, who live in our community, Dr. June Valera. He actually lives in Daly City, and they want to give back, along with our Daly City Crocker Lodge. And Masons, these are people that live here, in our Daly City, who wanna give back. And we need a health clinic to support our clinic. So, we'll, I'll let the community know more, and see if the community is still interested. And, um, so we need to move, move forward, because our health needs are being cut. And now the timing is overdue to offer those opportunities, because they're offering them for free, free health services. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Dejira Boni. I, I wanna start off with one of the last ones. And matter of fact, you and Councilmember Manalo made mention, and that's the services for John Ayesha Enna. I was, uh, honored to be there and to provide a proclamation. And the feeling that I got, and one of you said it, it was that Daly City is very diverse and its culture. Not only was the city manager there, but city staff was there, our police department was there, and it shows the togetherness that we have in the city, no matter what culture you are. Thank you, thank you for, for sharing that. Uh, Seafood City. Thank you, Councilmember Manalo for bringing that up. I can't wait for Seafood City. I am tired of running over to South San Francisco. And, uh, we now will have one in Daly City, and what's across from Seafood City in South San Francisco? What's across from it? Chow King. We got one of those coming too.
Drive-through, right?
Drive-through. So watch for that. Alright, uh, National Night Out, thank you Chief.
Yes.
Uh, for everything you're working on National Night Out. Uh, we'll have a new vendor there, uh, for the first time. I hope the weather is permitting. Uh, as Councilmember Manalo had said, you know, wife and I were driving downhillside Boulevard, and, uh, we looked over and she asked, when's Daly City's National Night Out? And I says, August fifth. And she says, oh, Colma's the same night. I said, you know which one you're going to, right? No offense, Colma, if we get some extra time, we'll stop by there too. I had the opportunity through Ms. Reyna Mae Foid to be invited to KQED Celebration of the Pacifica. And when I was offered, she asked me to come, and she said she'll take care of me. I said, no, no you won't. I'm gonna pay my own way. So, uh, I did for a reason. And that is to su- support the community, to support KQED, and to support the culture. And they gave dances in the following era, Tongan, Samoan, Hawaiian, and Tahitian. But there was a method for my madness. I did it because I used to dance. And, uh, I think I told the city manager, one day I'll show you the video, but I'm not gonna, uh, share it with all of you. But I used to dance and go in competitions, so it kinda brought back memories. I had to tell the people next to me, you know, on the Tahitian part, y- you know, you're supposed to watch the hands and the Hawaiian part, nothing else. And a lot of people don't know that, because the hands tell a story. So, uh, I really enjoyed myself, uh, going, uh, to that. And, uh, definitely open for more, and I like to hear from my colleagues as to what they do. Because I take it home with me, and I, oh yeah, I'm gonna have to try that sometime too, try that sometime too. So great, I really appreciate this particular part of the council meeting and hearing and seeing what others have done. So, uh, good job, that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm so sorry, I have a, a couple items.
I toggled something in Councilmember Manalo.
Well, I wanna say thank you to him, because there was a Burmese, um, event that happened at Gilbert Park. I wanna thank him, because, um, he was the one that mentioned it was happening. Um, and so it was really beautiful to see at, um, Gilbert Park and, um, the amazing food that I did take. Um, I, I did support and, and buy their am- amazing tea leaf sa- salad that was there from the Burmese community and, uh, Myanmar community. Um, as well as, I know we're not going to have another council meeting. Um, and so I wanted to share with others, um, there's gonna be a Dolger Seniors Artworks Event on August twelfth. Right here at City Hall, at the Octagon Gallery, from six to eight P M. Um, it's pretty phenomenal, the artwork that they do. Um, and so please join us then. And then also, the Second Annual Hip-Hop Day is going to be happening on August sixteen from eleven to five P M at the War Memorial Community Center. Um, so I wanted to share those, uh, two events, because I think we won't be able to share with others, um, in, in that realm, so. Uh, oh, also the Daly City Library Day with SF Giants. So if you actually buy, right, a ticket for that, you'll be able to, some of the proceeds go to our library. Thank you very much.
Oh my goodness, I just thought about so much. I see that, where's the chief? There he is, he's standing over there. See, you notice when people doing things, and you mention their name, they look up, see? Now he's off with his phone, he's, he's looking, right? Is he looking? Yeah, see? Uh, Daly City PAL is having a fundraiser. They just posted it, and it sells out quickly. So, uh, I believe the food is gonna be, uh, catered by Original Joe's. So, uh, what date was that, chief? August something? September, September fifth? Oh, we'll be back by then, alright, great. Thank you Natalie for that. Alright, so just wanna bring that out. I'm having, uh, no, don't mind me, I'm s- I'm starting to ease back into things, I'm having fun up here.
I, I see you're getting the groove, Vice Mayor. I see you're getting the groove, you're doing it amazing. Okay, this is the last one.
Oh, you got one more?
Yeah, our Daly City Free Legal Clinic, I think this is something so important. Um, a lot of our commu- community members, I know that it's actually been, um, at its maximum. It's free legal clinic at the second and fourth Friday each month. Um, you have to sign up for the registration, you can find it on our social media and Facebook. It's a partnership with API Legal Outreach, um, providing free in-person legal clinics to provide vital legal assistance to the underserved communities, um, in Daly City and San Antonio County. Um, and I just wanted to remind, um, our community of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Did you hear that magic word she said? Oh, see, I caught you, I caught you. It's free. Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Alright, uh, moving right ahead, I believe the next one is, is it a German? Oh, staff, staff, Mr. Picalotti.
Uh, no report tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Picalotti, and thank you for the work that you continue to do for our city and your staff and, and the support. Thank you very much. Alright, the next item is a German, and I'd like to start off with Councilmember Dejira Boni and Benito Jaime Delarosa.
Thank you very much. First of all, it's my honor to have his son here tonight, Jason. To immemorializing your dad and your family, um, who made such a big impact. So thank you for being here, and I know your mom couldn't be here, but much love. So let me begin. Benita Jamie Del Rosario Junior, born April fourteenth nineteen thirty-nine, and passed June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. He was born in Makati, Philippines, as Benito Del Rosario Junior. Was the fourth of seven children, of Benito Del Rosario Senior, and Lucina Del Rosario. With his father serving in the U S Army for over twenty-five years, Benito was raised primarily by his mother. From a young age, he learned the values of responsibility, resilience, and independence. Qualities that would shape the rest of his life. In nineteen fifty-nine, Benito immigrated to San Francisco, California, following in the footsteps of his father, who was serving in the U S Army. His early years in the United States were marked by determination and hard work, including time spent laboring in the fields, ble- yes, in the fields, agricultural fields in Delano. In the early nineteen sixties to nineteen sixty-three. Benito was drafted into the U S Army during the Vietnam War. He served two honorable years, including a deployment in Korea. After returning home, Benito began working with Home Yardage, a local fabric retailer in San Francisco in nineteen sixty-seven. He met the love of his life, Norma Mercado. And just three months later, the two were married, beginning a lifelong loving journey together. In nineteen seventy-one, Benito purchased a home in South San Francisco, where he and Norma would raise their beautiful family. His parents also lived in the same household, a reflection of Benito's deep respect for family and tradition. That same year, he began working for BG&E, where he built a fulfilling twenty-seven-year career before retiring in nineteen ninety-eight. Throughout the years, Benito opened up his home to many welcoming family members who headed, uh, needed a place to live when they first got here from the Philippines, or anytime they needed a place to stay. And friends that were just passing through. His home became a hub of warmth, support, and togetherness. It was the generosity of spirit that defined so much of who he was as a man who never hesitated to give, help, or host anyone. Independent by nature and adventurous at heart, Benito loved to travel. He especially cherished trips to New York and the Philippines, where he enjoyed reconnecting with family, culture, and lifelong friends. Benito was a true, true people person, with a warm smile like his son has, I have to add that, Jason. And genuine interest and others, he could make connections with anyone he met. Young, old, rich, poor, his humor, his sense of style, his humility, his kindness left a lasting impression on everyone he met, including myself. I was blessed to be his friend. He is survived by his loving wife, Norma Del Rosario. His son, Jason, who is here tonight, Del Rosario, and lovely daughter Jasmine Garcia, and their beloved son-in-law, Christopher Garcia, along with three wonderful, beautiful grandchildren, who he brought endless pride and joy to his life. Benito is also survived by two siblings, Angelita Rodrigo Del Rosario, who reside in Elk Grove and Southern Sacramento areas, along with a wide circle of nieces, nephews, cousins, extended family throughout California, across the United States and in the Philippines. He kept close ties with many, many maintaining relationships, generations and borders. Benito's life was one of service, family, generosity, and deep connection. His legacy lives on in the countless lives he has touched, and the love he has so freely gives to everyone. He will be remembered with honor, gratitude, and enduring affection. And I must add And I must add, his wife and him used to show up together, and they would have matching outfits. And uh, we would call him Jamie, if, if you don't mind, Jason, you know, I know your dad. He was so patriotic, this man was true patriotic to the United States of America. And he made sure that everybody knew it at every place we went to. Every Filipino off, um, place that we went to, the Burri Burri, everywhere. And they would show up and they would dance together, and they would light up the dance floor. So, in the celebration that they had for his dad, it was a request of his father. It would, most people have a celebration of life, but they, we really truly did. They, Martin Agalas was able to get the L P R, the new place in South City. And they had a D J, and everyone was dancing because that's who they were. That was a true celebration of life, and it was truly heartwarming because you could feel the love in the room. And you know cherishing each moment together with friendships is really what counts. It is really what counts, spending time together with his wonderful family. So I humbly close and adjourn with, along with my counsel, Jason, to your father's memory. And along with your loving family, who I cherish to have as my, as friends and long in our community. And I appreciate you and very humbly and grateful, so thank you. And then if I might add a, a quick note um, through the Vice Mayor. I see that also, um, but I wanna respectfully, um, from the beginning, I transferred over. Um, a close of memory from the last meeting, and I, I wanna be respectful to my colleagues as well. But I, I had it on the first meeting, but it's, it's fine that all of us do it. So I, the reason I wanna do this is because Queen John Ayesha, and I will make it short, so the others can comment. Was born February twenty-third nineteen seventy-three, and passed in her sleep, June twenty-second twenty twenty-five. And I will just make my comments short, so others under my counsel can do theirs as well. What I wanna say about uh, Queen Ayesha, also known as Auntie John to the youth. Is that the impact that this person made, not just through talent that God gave her for music, for directing youth. And having a close ties with the youth and the Samoan community and beyond. Welcoming everyone that came in through the immigration process, through the church. Or whether it was through Ms. Patsy and P H D, Dr. Patsy as we know her, in that culture. Because the impact that they made on the youth, I stayed after the services. And to hear the youth speak, which is so vital, to let them know that they are not alone. And losing someone like that is full of love, and I think that that is an impression that we all need to leave in our lives. Is to be kind, be loved, give what we have that God gives us, use your talent for good. And that we can all be that together. So, I wanted to call the Queen, because I talked to Ms. Faupou uh, a few weeks ago. Actually, the, the day that I, uh, the Queen passed away, Ms. Faupou had contacted me. And said that they, they had been together earlier that day, and for some reason, you know, you never know what decision you make. You're supposed to be somewhere else, but chose to be there with that person. And then got a call that we're called, you know, we never know when we're gonna be called. So I think that in spirit of kindness for one another other. And then, we need to really, really realize that and focus on really what matters in life, with humility and kindness and love. So I appreciate the time, I know that others would like to say something as well, and I'll close with that and uh, continue on. But thank you very much, and uh, thank you, Jason, for being here tonight. I really appreciate it with your dad.
Alright, thank you, um, Councilmember D Giovanni. Uh, next we'll have Councilmember Justly Manalo.
Uh, thank you on um, the same honor that we had submitted. For John Ayesha Enna. This is uh, exactly from Reyna Mayafua, who sent me this to read this evening. Today, John Ayesha Enna was laid to rest. Ayesha served the community here in Daly City for almost fifty years. As a lifetime member and choir maestro for the First Samoan Congregational Christian Church. Of the America Samoan in Daly City on Annie Street. Ayesha's legacy extended as her work for twenty-three years. At the Samoan Community Development Center, and most recently as the Director of Community Engagement and Logistics. Ayesha's impact serving the underprivileged, especially the youth, can be seen not only in Daly City. But the whole Bay Area. The family, church, and whole Samoan community extend their thanks and appreciate. The City of Daly City for their prestige, honor, and recognition on Sunday. God bless, and God bless Daly City. Um, thank you, Ms. Reyna Mayafua, if you're watching, we have our sincere condolences to the whole community. Um, during this time. Um, also would like to honor Pia Lopez Baños Carrion. Um, Pia Lopez Baños Carrion, uh, birthday, October twelve nineteen sixty-four. Sunset on July sixteen twenty twenty-five. Maria Pilar Lopez Baños Carrion was welcomed to her eternal home on July sixteen twenty twenty-five. In Burlingame, California, after her battle with cancer. Pia, or Mama P, as she was affectionately known, was a bright light to those around her. She was constantly living her life in accordance with Jesus' teachings. Her earthly journey was marked by an unshakable devotion to love, compassion, community, and forgiveness. Mama P is survived by her husband Mike and her son Miguel. She was the eldest daughter of Eugenio and Carmen, pre-deceased. Pia also leaves behind her siblings Joan and Ramsey, her niece Gabby, and her nephews Rafael and Michael. She was born on October twelve nineteen sixty-four in Quezon City, Philippines. And lived there until she immigrated to the United States in two thousand and four. After her graduation from the University of the Philippines de Lima. She became employed by the A B S C B N. And worked her way to becoming the Director for Radio and Regional Network Group Promo. Before she eventually worked again for A B S C B N International's Production Department. As head of the T V Promotions and finally, Public Relations. She dedicated her life to highlighting and uplifting stories about the Filipino community. Outside of work, Mama P was involved in the Folklore mu- Movement. A global, community-based organization, preaching the values of a more united world. Through dialogue, empathy, and loving one's neighbors. She was also involved with her local parish of Saint Roberts in San Bruno, California. Mama P enjoyed hiking, coffee, asking questions, and telling stories. She was integrity personified, grace and dignity humanized. And kindness in its purest form. Thank you, Pia Mama P.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Manalo. Uh, thank you, Councilmember D Giovanni. You know, as I'm looking at the list here, and there's about seven on the list. And Daly City is just a little small part of the entire world. And with the exception of Mr. De La Rosa, I know everybody here on this list. Can you even, you know, it just goes to show how life is so precious. And that uh, it's great that we're taking the time to do this to honor those who have recently departed. So I'll begin, and the three uh, folks I'm going to make mention. I've either worked with them, or they were a Daly City resident, uh, a combination of both, and I knew of them. I'll first start off with William James Sims. Seventy-seven years old, he passed away on May eighth twenty twenty-five. He was a San Francisco native born. In nineteen forty-eight, he was a decorated war veteran with a Bronze Star for Valor. Amongst other medals and awards for his military service in Vietnam from nineteen sixty-eight to nineteen seventy. He continued his legacy of public service as a San Francisco officer with the San Francisco Police Department for thirty-two years. And spent the last portion of his career with the Mounted Unit, which he absolutely loved. For those of you who don't know, if you became a San Francisco Police Officer tomorrow. And after you pass probation, you put your name down that you wanna be on the Mounted Unit, it would take you thirty-plus years. That's how many folks like to be on the Mounted Unit. Bill's hobbies and interests helped define who he was. He li- he loved Hawaii, music, golf, barbecuing, Joes of Westlake. And Bay Area sports, especially the San Francisco Giants. He would often spend his summers attending games with his family, and when he wasn't sitting by the beach in Hawaii. He shared these loved ones with his family and friends, leaving behind many happy and wonderful memories. He is survived by his wife Sharon, in which he shared thirty-nine wonderful years. Bill's memory will live on in the wonderful memories of those privileged enough to have met and knew him. He shared his infectious smile and warm heart with so many family members and loved ones. And we find comfort in knowing how many lives he impacted with the love that he shared. Bill Sims was a Daly City resident as well. The next uh, gentleman's uh, Anton Thomas Jensen. Another Daly City resident, and he was my sergeant when I was in the police department. Anton Tony Thomas Jensen, aged ninety. Passed away peacefully on June fifteenth twenty twenty-five in Daly City, California. He was a longtime resident of Koma, he was born in nineteen thirty-five in Albert Lea, Minnesota. To Wallace and Emmeline Jensen. He was raised on a farm north of Albert Lea, near Clark's Cove with his seven brothers. He attended local rural school and for eight years, and he graduated from Albert Lea High School in nineteen fifty-three. Gee, I wasn't even born yet. Tony proudly served his country in the United States Army from nineteen fifty-five to nineteen fifty-seven at the Presidio of San Francisco. And after his military service, he went on to de- dedicate his life to public service. As a police officer with the San Francisco Police Department, retiring at the rank of Sergeant. Known for his steady demeanor and strong sense of duty, Tony left a lasting impact on his colleagues and the community. He was definitely a man of deep faith, he was a lifelong Baptist Christian. And served as an ordained deacon at Hamilton Square Baptist Church in San Francisco for many years. He was an avid fan of the San Francisco Forty-Niners and the San Francisco Giants, and rarely missed a game. Whether cheering from the stands or his living room, he found great joy in supporting his teams. He is survived by his loving partner of many years, Blanca Corilio. And his children, Paula Innis, Mitch Jensen, Lisa Beffa, Ken Jensen, Carlos Corilio. Javier Corilio, Wally Jensen, and many grandchildren. The next I have is an uh, Brian Eric Luhon of Pacifica, who I've known about. He died July seventh in Pacifica at home. He was born in San Francisco, March eighth of nineteen ninety-three. To Cynthia and Bill Luhon, and was a lifelong resident of Pacifica. From the time he was a child with the Indian guides, part of the Boy Scouts. They went on a field trip to the Pacifica Police Station. From that point on, he knew he wanted to become a police officer. He was in an accident when he was twenty-one years old, and had to have his baby toe amputated. His only concern, could he still become a police officer? He began his career with the San Francisco Police Department in nineteen ninety-six. And over the course of his career, he was assigned to Bayview Park, Southern Richmond, and Ingleside Station. He took great pride in his time with the Major Accident Investigation Team, and after twenty-four years. He retired in October twenty-sixth of twenty twenty. Along with his love for being a police officer, he had a passion for animals, especially his cats and dogs. He wanted to start an animal rescue when he retired, but the dream never came to fruition. Brian was married to Diana Block, although they were divorced, they remained good friends. Brian is survived by Diana, his father Bill, sister Laura, stepmother Carol, and stepbrothers. Preceding him in death is his mother Cynthia Luhon. Lastly. I'd like to also adjourn in memory of our senior Celadillo. He's a father to Public Works Groundskeeper Carlo Celadillo. So with that being said, if you can all kindly, please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you so much, everyone, ladies and gentlemen, uh, staff, uh, city attorney, city clerk. Uh, this meeting is now adjourned. You uh, be safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you again. Thank you.